It's a place where you're free to express yourself and just free to explore who you are and become your own person. Turner Theater has really helped me grow as an individual, grow as an artist, grow as a student. It requires a lot of work ethic, it requires a lot of time management, it requires a lot of focus, but it's also a place where I just get to have fun and explore new, try new things. Through Turner, I've been able to practice with different makeup, practice with costume, be onstage, be in the orchestra, be able to choreograph, be able to direct. It's really helped me establish who I want to be as an artist and kind of what I want to do for the rest of my life.
At CFB Fine Arts, just changed and strengthened the gifts that my boys have already had. Each of them is developed musically and onstage in theater programs in just ways that we never could have imagined when we saw them starting out as first or second graders.
I think the arts just develops in our children, the love for their culture, the
love for other cultures. They have, I think forever now, will be interested in going to see shows on Broadway, seeing them as they come here to Dallas. Several of them, I think, want to go full-time into music or into theater themselves. So I think, long-term, if nothing else, it's developed in them, the gifts that they can stand up proud, they can hold themselves together, they can work together as a team.
So when I came to Turner, I decided to join the Metta Academy. I came in as a really quiet person and throughout this school year, throughout the semesters, I ended up getting out of my shell, learning a lot of different skills that I could apply not only to the projects here in the academy, but also to the real-world scenarios. I am now a junior at Southern Methodist University and I am in the Engineering School, majoring in Civil Engineering and Math. And everything that I've learned here at the academy, not only have I been able to apply it to what I'm learning in the classes, what I've been able to do in my internships, I think all those skills have really been able to help me grow as a person, have been able to allow me to build the connections that I need, not only with students, but with professionals. I've been able to come back, receive the same support from the teachers here, and continue strong as I.
There we go. Greetings and welcome to all of you to the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees regular meeting. This meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM on March the 6th, 2014. At this time, would you please join me in standing as Richard Fleming leads us aboard opening prayer and then remains standing as Nancy Watton leads us in the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have made and the bountiful blessings. Thank you for this time that you have given us to lead our district, continue to bless our teachers, students, and staff, continue to lead our district's leadership. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for all of our students, and the board uses this goal to guide all of our deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, actions, decisions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, which is, of course, stipulated by Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. And these items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all board members are here and we do constitute a forum and can conduct business on behalf of the school district. Also, as required by Board Policy, BBD Local, at each meeting of the board, the president shall announce and the ministers shall reflect the name of each board member who has completed the required training, who has exceeded the required hours of training, and who is deficient in the required training as of the date of the meeting before any vote of the board is taken. At this time, let the minister reflect that all members of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees have completed and exceeded the annual requirements for school board member continuing education for the 2013-2014 school year. Now, at this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2, Recognition of Special Guests and Announcements, Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Goode, and members of the board, to our audience, thank you for being here tonight. You may have heard a rumor that Carrollton was going to host the Winter Olympics, but that rumor has been not true, found not to be true. We, hopefully, the Winter Olympics are past us as well as the winter weather, so we appreciate your attendance here tonight. As always, we begin our recognitions tonight with our VIPs, and we, you know, we always like to have a little brain exercise. So just mentally to yourself, think about all the different ways you can come up with for the initials VIP. Just think for a minute, and I'm just going to give you a few off the top of my head. The Vehicle Inspection Program, that's one VIP. The Visual Identity Program, very informed peers. Very into pizza, that's a good VIP. Well, those are not our VIPs here tonight. Our VIPs here tonight are our very important professionals. And we are honored that their friends and family are here with them tonight as well. And when we recognize the VIPs, guests, and friends, and family, would you please stand when your VIP is introduced? And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Goode to join me in the front so that we can honor our very important professionals.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees and Dr. Burns. It gives me great pleasure to present to you Central Elementary's 2013-14 member of the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Beth Hines. Nice, helpful, say all of Mrs. Hines' students about her. Ruben says she helps me in every way. I was stuck on Level L and now I have risen all the way to Level O. Only in education does that mean anything to anyone. I want to thank her for going step by step with my readings, says a grateful Hesarella. Beth Hines is a Texas transplant from Missouri, where she graduated from the University of Missouri in Kansas City with a bachelor's degree in Spanish. Beth went to Ecuador on a mission trip to teach English to children there. While on that mission, she also met her husband, David. Only Beth could accomplish teaching children to speak English and find a husband on the Beth began teaching elementary bilingual education when her two children, Rebecca and Diego, became school age. She taught bilingual at McLaughlin and Goode. She soon became a bilingual ESL instructional facilitator, first at Kent, then McLaughlin Strickland, and now she's with us. We are fortunate that Mrs. Hines has called CFB her career home for 21 years. Beth's colleagues described her as tenacious, hard-working, organized, and detail-oriented. When undertaking a project, Beth is like a dog with a bone. She is persistent and will not give up until she has accomplished her task. Mrs. Hines is an exceptional team player and always has a smile on her face. She serves as our ESL bilingual LPAC Coordinator with 555 LEPS students. Her job is a full-time job, but also she took the job of PTA President, and our PTA is doing better than it's done in years. Every afternoon, you can spot her in the parking lot, wearing a neon pink hat and wearing orange tennis shoes while dodging and/or directing traffic and putting little people into the correct car. On other days, she's out front selling pizzas for fundraising. She is multi-talented. Mrs. Hines is an exemplary role model and deeply committed to our common goal of high achievement for all students. We celebrate you, Beth, as a valued member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, members of the board, colleagues, and guests. My name is Michael Arriola, and it is my honor to serve as the principal of Early College High School at Brookhaven College. The mission of Early College High School is to establish a supportive environment which develops college-ready students. No member of our staff embodies this mission like our 2013-14 MVP, or VIP, and MVP, Mr. Mr. Magnus has been a member of the CFB family for 13 years, starting off at Dan F. Long and joining the ECHS family in 2011. As a member of the ECHS family, Mr. Magnus teaches world geography, U.S. history, and reading. Mr. Magnus is the epitome of what a teacher should be. As one colleague stated, Mr. Magnus is a wonderful example of a teacher that invests in the personal lives of his students. He takes the time to get to know them and makes himself available to them, even if it is at the cost of his own time. Another colleague says of Mr. Magnus, "The moment that Mr. Magnus joined our staff, he jumped in, dedicating himself to the students in every way possible. He works tirelessly to have outstanding test scores, but what is impressive is that he dedicates just as much time and effort to helping students be successful in their college classes. He spends endless hours at school editing college papers as well as mentoring and supporting kids in every endeavor. He is always willing to give of his time outside of the school day, planning field trips, organizing dances, helping to start new clubs. Mr. Magnus is truly invested in the ECHS students and will sacrifice all that he can to ensure their success. He is a teacher that students will remember for years after graduation." While I could go on and on about the great things Mr. Magnus does, I think the greatest compliments come from the students themselves. One ninth-grade student says of Mr. Magnus, "He is a teacher who cares way more than he should for his students and their education." He does not release the students a second early because he says, "You have to get your money's worth." He's there on Saturdays even when he doesn't have to be, just so that his students understand, he does the most he can for his students, so thank you, Mr. Magnus." Another wrote, "Thank you for all the hard work and devotion you put towards us. You are a great teacher with a unique and positive personality. Thank you for everything you do to help us succeed." One junior wrote, "Mr. Magnus has definitely been the most memorable teacher I've ever had. I've known him since middle school and nothing's changed, except his jokes. They got better." Another student wrote, "I am glad all of your efforts have paid off and that you're finally being recognized for being such an amazing teacher." Finally, this quote was repeated by many of our students. Although I never had the pleasure of having you as a teacher, I have seen the effort that you put in for each and every one of us. Thank you, Mr. Magnus, for all that you do for our school. It is my honor to welcome Mr. David Magnus into the very important profession of teaching.
I am Robin Callahan, the proud principal of Freeman Elementary. It is my privilege tonight to introduce and recognize Brandy Deal as the newest member of the very important profession of teaching. Brandy started her teaching career six years ago at Sheffield. Now, as a Freeman Tiger, she has established herself as a passionate, motivated, and dedicated teacher and leader. This school year, Brandy accepted the challenge of moving to second grade and building a brand-new team. While other individuals would have been terrified of this move, Brandy modeled what she expects from her students, a growth mindset to change, and the practice of learning with and through others. Because of her kind, patient, and giving heart, her second-grade team has even nicknamed her Mama Deal. This team is unique in that everyone is new to second grade, and four of her teammates are brand-new to the profession of teaching. But I can assure you, at any given time when you walk down their hallway, you will hear the sounds of children learning and see evidence of high achievement. She models the true essence of our commitment to education. Her colleagues shared such heartfelt comments and thoughts. One said, "Just her presence alone changes the negative into a positive. She will do anything and everything for her students and us." Another said, "Oh, Brandy, she always puts others before herself. She's just so nurturing, and I wouldn't be where I am today without her support." Every day when I walk in, she asks me, "Are you doing okay? How can I help you?" And I know she truly means it. As her principal, Brandy serves the Freeman family in any capacity needed to help our school grow. She doesn't wait for me to ask. She's often the first to volunteer with a suggestion or an idea. She greets our children every morning for breakfast at 7:00 AM. I truly believe this warm welcome makes the positive difference for so many of our children. Speaking of children, they certainly were not at a loss for words when I asked them why Ms. Deal deserves this VIP honor. Over and over, children use words like intelligent, determined, champion, kind, and entertaining. Of course, I couldn't let that one go. I had to dig a little deeper with entertaining. They said, "Well, she just makes learning fun for everyone. Ms. Deal is a funny and creative teacher. She plays this game called Sparkle with our spelling words, and we get Hershey's candy when we try real hard." Besides her high expectations for academic success, Brandy prides herself in teaching children to be thinkers and readers. One child even said, "Don't tell Ms. Lennox, but reading is my favorite subject." Her students say she inspires them to be better, and her colleagues feel the same way, too. Not a day goes by where the sounds of laughter and joy are not streaming from her Pinterest S. classroom. Her learning environment supports lifelong learning, creativity, and strong relationships. Recently, Brandy shared with me that she is ready for her next move. This summer, she will begin her coursework toward obtaining her librarian certification through a master's degree at UNT. While I know the classroom setting will one day miss her presence, I believe she will instill the love of reading, curiosity, and imagination in so many more children for years to come. A quote that I believe describes Brandy's commitment to education is this, "A teacher who loves teaching teaches children to love learning." Just when we thought Brandy's love for teaching wasn't enough, she proves there's even more. She is married to a wonderful man, Matt Deal, a teacher. Now that is a commitment to teaching. Daily, Brandy models what we in CFB believe, high achievement for all. Every child deserves a teacher like her. It is with pleasure to recognize this inspiring person, Brandy Deal, as a member of the very
Good evening, President Goode, Dr. Burns, and members of the board. My name is Debbie Williams, principal at Kent Elementary. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce and honor Anita Patel as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Mrs. Patel began her career at Kent as a parent volunteer. After working with students in a school setting, she decided to enroll in college to become a teacher. Mrs. Patel joined the Kent staff 10 years ago and is currently teaching fourth-grade language arts. Also, she has served on the CIC and currently is a student council sponsor. Mrs. Patel is our staff celebrity. She was a magazine cover girl featured in a 2011 Ladies' Home Journal article entitled "Mixing Fashion with Faith." So that's pretty awesome. Mrs. Patel is greatly loved by her colleagues. With much love, they shared these words. "When I grow up, I want to be just like Anita. She is one of the kindest, gentlest, and most gracious people I've ever known. She is a beautiful soul who lifts up the spirits of every Kent student and teacher she comes in contact with. She is a wonderful teacher who never gives up trying to help her students succeed. She takes her jobs with students seriously but never forgets to enjoy them as the young people they are. Her ability to build relationships enables students to feel safe, thus maximizing their learning. The students will tell you she never raises her voice, but we all think it's just her lovely English accent that makes her sound polite even when she's fussing." I did steal those words from a staff member. Anita has the special gift of making everyone feel loved and cherished. She always takes time to ask those how others are doing, and she truly listens. Anita diligently looks for ways to lift others, whether bringing delicious food to a luncheon or offering her home for school gatherings. She is gracious in every way and makes our lives richer by virtue of knowing her. We will always be fortunate to have Anita and this kind of dedication at Kent. In addition to Anita, in addition, Anita is a loyal, devoted mother and wife, and her family is here with her tonight. Kent is proud to recognize Anita Patel as a member of the very important profession
Good evening. As principal at La Vieita Elementary, I'd like to introduce you to our third-grade teacher, Casey is a hard-working, positive professional who has high expectation and truly believes in building relationships with her students. She cares about each and every student, student welcomes them, and makes them feel part of her classroom and family. Even the most reluctant or challenging student can't help but smile and love Ms. Garcia after feeling accepted and successful in her classroom. Her students love to learn, and they're willing to put forth the best effort to please her. She challenges and she motivates her students to achieve and succeed. Her students think deeply and beyond the ordinary. Ask her students what they say about Ms. Garcia, and they say them ordinary things, you know? She's nice, she's pretty, she's polite, and she's always fair. And then they added, "She makes learning fun. She tells us that we are spies when we're searching for answers. And she teaches more than just the plain stuff." All of her students describe the classroom, and they love how it's decorated with bright colors, feathers, and boas. Our staff members will tell you that Casey Garcia is the most cheerful person at our school, and she always has a smile on her face. As our Sunshine Committee chairperson, she's planned many staff celebrations, and she's loved on those who are hurting by maybe organizing the meals or buying books to honor those loved ones, or just to be there to give them a hug or a pat on the back. Casey's goal is to keep the staff happy, connected, and is always coming up with new ideas to build team spirit. We frequently hear her say, "What can I do to help, and what do you need?" Casey brings sunshine to the building daily with her smiles and positive attitude. Ms. Garcia is a friend to everyone. She cares deeply about her students, her coworkers, and her school. And Casey, we're proud to recognize you as a member of the VIP.
Our next recognition tonight will be our business partner, Valley View Christian Church, the Blessed Teen Parent Ministry at Valley Christian Church for their continued support of CFB ISD. Joining us tonight are John and Mary Latfatalo. John and Mary, do you come up? And yes, please bring others. We want to recognize you all. And our board vice president, Mr. Shore, will now read a little bit of something about your positive impact on our school district.
Tonight, we recognize Valley View Christian Church for their involvement in our school, business, partnership, and education program. CFB ISD is fortunate to have an outstanding relationship with Valley View Christian Church, an organization that serves. Valley View Christian Church cares about its community and strives to make a difference. Our partnership is an example of what is possible when a public school district and caring individuals join forces for the welfare of our community's youth. In September of 2010, a Sunday school class at Valley View Christian Church, led by Marla and John Latfatalo, created a ministry funded by Valley View Christian called Blessing Teen Parents, known as BTP. Blessing Teen Parents' mission is to provide a safe, friendly, and relaxing environment where teen parents receive support for themselves and their families and connect with other young parents. Each month, an event is hosted by Blessing Teen Parents' Ministry for our students who are teen mothers and fathers. The event begins with dinner for everyone. After dinner, the teen dads engage in activities with their male mentors while the teen moms participate in activities planned for them. A nursery is provided so the parents can enjoy time with other parents and participate in the activities that evening. Blessing Teen Parents' events have included such activities as a spa night, a game night, a clothing exchange, and baby showers. In addition to the monthly events, the class hosts a Christmas party for the teen parents and their entire families. The party includes family pictures with Santa, crafts, food, and gift baskets. The teen parents sometimes bring their siblings, and each attendee receives a gift. Each May, Blessing Teen Parents holds a graduation celebration honoring the graduating senior teen parents and their families. There's also a scholarship program available for the teen moms. Scholarships have been awarded the past two years, and the program will continue to assist teen moms as they pursue higher education. The success of this program is confirmed by the fact that many of the students continue to attend Blessing Teen Parents' events even after they graduate from CFB. We are extremely grateful that Valley View Christian Church and the volunteers have chosen to partner with CFB and support our students. This support has enriched the lives of our students and has contributed to experiences that promote academic and social development. This contributes to a strong, healthy learning environment. On behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, it would James Goode, president, and Dr. Bobby Burns, superintendent, presenting, it is our privilege to present this certificate of our gratitude to Valley View Christian Church and the Blessing Teen Parents Initiative. You truly exemplify a meaningful relationship between community and schools. Accepting the certificate are the leaders of the Blessing Teen Parents program at Valley View Christian Church, Marla and John Latfatalo. Marla and John have been longtime residents of Carrollton, and their children have graduated from CFB ISD. We thank you for your vision and for making a difference in the lives of CFB students.
For our next recognition tonight, we have our Director of the Educational Foundation, Mr. Jeff Moore, here. And he's going to introduce us to our unsung heroes for this year. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Again, my name is Jeff Moore. I'm the Director of the Educational Foundation. And before I move on to what I was going to say, I have to tell you that little fellow made my night. It's been a long day away from the kids, and we're all having a long day. I think that was really cute and sweet, and I think my child would have probably done something similar, if not worse. That was really cute. Thanks, Dr. Burns. Thanks, Board of Directors, for having me here tonight, making some time on your very busy agenda. I sincerely appreciate the time you've given me. The mission of the Educational Foundation is to enrich the educational opportunities within the schools of Carrollton Farmers Branch. We do that by holding a variety of fundraisers, seeking community partners and community donors, to raise funds so that we can provide scholarships and grants and other programs back to the students and teachers here in CFB. One of those events was held back in November. It's called our Unsung Heroes Breakfast, as Dr. Burns mentioned. The event, the intent of that breakfast is to recognize the wonderful staff we have here at CFB, the teachers and other professionals that make our education complete here. And they go above and beyond. It's about those who have passion and have drive to not just make it. They don't just punch in and punch out. They certainly go above and beyond the normal call of duty. And I wanted to recognize and call up, is that correct? I'm calling up each of these individuals. First, we have Heather Robinson from Blair Elementary. If you want to come on up. Quinn Tran, Blanton Elementary. Catherine Sandlin from Central Elementary. Virginia Sandoval, Farmers Branch Elementary. Lauren Augustine, Freeman Elementary. Katie Kemp, Frenow Elementary. Lisa Burns, Landry Elementary. Veronica Kratz, LaValita Elementary. Melanie Williams, Los Colinas Elementary. Lauren Lintelman, McQuarreter Elementary. Kathy Gibson, Rainwater Elementary. Venus Thompson, Rosemead Elementary. Marina Salinas, Thompson Elementary. Eric Costa, Bush Middle School. Alma Zent, Polk Middle School. Brian Anderson, Field Middle School. Trish Jones, Creekview High School. Brenda Breiling, Ranchview High School. Mike Seeley, B. Salazar Center. Real quickly before, I have one more person I'd like to recognize. But just to let you know, each of these individuals are nominated by their principal, and then we have a review process that we go through. And we have, it's a very tough process because all of these individuals are wonderful people that have incredible, amazing stories, and I'm very fortunate and blessed to have the opportunity to read those and to serve on a committee that gets to help narrow it down. We do have one more individual from Kent Elementary, Deandra Parker, who was recognized as our unsung hero for the entire district this year. I have a real, I have a very short page and a half here of information about Ms. Parker, but I'm going to summarize. I do that pretty well. Just real quickly about Ms. Parker, 32 years in the profession. It's just unbelievable. She is an innovator. She's created programs such as the Bugs Club, which means being unusually good, or bringing upgrades. She's been innovative, again, by creating a computer programming, a computer programming program called the Bottle Rocket Club for math students, where she went out and raised money to help generate the funds to have a startup cost covered and to implement that. She's also a collaborator and a motivator, and she shares her passion with others, and she's truly gifted. And you can grab this from me if you want to read all about her. She just seems, just a wonderful person, as all of you are. And you're all very worthy individuals, and we're all fortunate to have you. And, you know, I didn't get this approved by the Board or Dr. Burns, but I'm going to go out on a little limb here and probably overstep my bounds. I'm going to give you all the next week off. So, I hope you enjoy it and think of me as you're sitting in your lawn chair. But thank you all very much. We have another wonderful event coming up on August 26th that helps raise money for all of our wonderful programs. It's going to be at the Addison Event Center, and it's called Sail Away with the Foundation. It's kind of got a Jimmy Buffett Island theme, so maybe you can join us. Thanks.
Mr. Goode, members of the board, that concludes our recognition tonight.
Very good. If I may, I'd like to just make a few comments. It is truly always a pleasure for the Board to be able to, in a small way, especially to say thank you to some very special educators. We don't always see you and where our paths take us, but occasionally we might visit your campus. But this board meeting is really our opportunity to really get to know our educators. And especially under this situation, we get to see, shall I say, the cream of the crop. And it's truly an honor for us to be able to have you here with us and to be able, in some small way, to at least acknowledge and thank you for all that you do for all of our students. Because we praise our district everywhere we go as board members, but we are very realistic in understanding our school district and the quality of our students is completely dependent upon you. So, we want to do everything we can to encourage you and to always say thank you for what you do. But it's also an opportunity, occasionally when we have the time, we have businesses, and as it was here, we have the Valley View Christian Church, who took it upon themselves to create a program which directly benefits some of our students. And it's always a pleasure for us to see some of the many programs. I'm sure most of us do not realize how many programs go on in our school district that we've never heard of. They are done quietly, discreetly, but most importantly, they are done to say, "You are important," students. And to John and Marla especially, we thank you for being here, and thank you for the program that you have started with our teen parents. And, but not last, are those special ones that the Education Foundation has recognized, and we ourselves can also, once again, say thank you to the unique things and the strange programs sometimes you educators come up with. But the fascinating thing about it is you get unbelievable results. And I have to say this, if you know Dr. Burns, we are pretty much result-driven. But it's such a pleasure to see the various programs that have been created by the ingenuity of you on the various campuses. And for us to have the opportunity to be able to hear about some of your accomplishments and at this time to at least say thank you. Before we go any further, I realize we have many educators in here. And I also realize and appreciate you have school tomorrow. And with that being said, we will take a short recess for approximately 10 minutes and then re-adjourn at approximately 7:43. Ladies and gentlemen, this board meeting is reconvened at 7:46. And with that, we will now proceed to our next agenda item, which is Agenda Item 3, Report by Superintendent. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Members of the board, tonight's student achievement presentation is on special education. There's a certain, I guess, irony to that is that we think all our kids are special, absolutely, and we believe that we have one of the best special education programs in the state of Texas. So, we are honored here tonight to have Ms. Wells to present that. But I believe I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith for a more formal introduction.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. We are blessed tonight to be able to hear about one of our premier programs in Carrollton Farmers Branch. We truly believe that all students need to achieve at high levels and need to have the same opportunities for high levels of learning. So, tonight, as I said, we are very blessed to have Ms. Randy Wells, who is the Executive Director for Special Education, here to talk to us about the programs that we have in place and share with you some data, and particularly about one of our special programs. So, Ms. Wells, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tracy Smith. Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, members of the school board, good evening. The goal of Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD is high achievement for all students. I'm proud to be a member of a school district where "all" means "all." It's our only goal, and it includes students with disabilities. If you will allow me, when I was preparing for this presentation, I received an email from one of our transition specialists. And to give you some background, every spring, we offer a field trip to parents of students with disabilities who are with us from 18 to 21 years of age, to various programs in the area that offer support for their children when they leave us at 21. So, this email came to myself and a few other people. It says, "Hello, all. I just wanted to pass on the praises the CFB parents heard yesterday during our Transition Forum field trip to my possibilities. Michael Thomas, Executive Director, told the parents they are lucky to be in CFB, where we have wonderful programs for our students that are 18-plus years old. He works with young adults from all around the Dallas Metroplex area that are choosing not to participate in their 18-plus school programs because they are inadequate and a waste of time. I am proud to be from CFB." Sharon Clark, Transition Specialist, Creekview High School. "All" means "all" in CFB. In special education, we serve 2,427 students birthed through 21 years of age. And this number is larger, just for your information, than any of our largest high schools in CFB. We serve 11 different eligibility categories. As you can see, learning disabilities, other health impaired, emotional disturbance, intellectual disability, et cetera. And how did our students do on the state, wrong button, state assessment? This slide represents all students served in special education taking Star, Star Modified, and Star Alternate. We receive Level 2 satisfactory in all areas. The slide, if you can see, the yellow is the state, the green is the region, and the blue is CFB. So, CFB outperformed the state in all content areas. We were consistent with the other districts in the region in reading, language arts, math, and writing, and we outperformed the region in science and social studies. We realize that we were in good company, but we have some work to do with writing with our students. But we work all the time to try to find ways to help them to be better writers. Again, we have 11 eligibility categories in CFB, but tonight I would like to focus on one, and that's autism. I'm proud of all our programs, especially the work we do with our students with autism in CFB. Individuals with autism have challenges with communication and language, socialization, and behavior, which include stereotypical repetitive behavior like rocking, or flapping, or spinning objects. They may also have restricted perseverative interests demonstrated by an obsessive fascination with a narrow topic like dinosaurs, maps, or weather. Autism spectrum disorders include autistic disorder, Asperger's Syndrome, and pervasive developmental disorder not otherwise specified, PDDNOS. And the range of skills and abilities among individuals with autism is extensive. This slide shows, you've likely heard statistics in the media about the increase in the number of students with autism in our country. This data is from the Center for Disease Control from 2008, which is the last update, and it reveals the prevalence to be approximately 1 in 88 children have autism spectrum disorders. More specifically, 1 in 54 boys and 1 in 252 girls are diagnosed with autism in the United States. This slide represents the number of students with autism in CFB. The data goes back to 2005 school year, which shows we had 160 students eligible for services as having autism. As of this January 2014, we are serving 472 students, which is 195% increase in eight school years. In CFB, 1 out of every 50 students has autism. Approximately 20% of all our students in special education has autism. That's 1 out of every 5 students. We also have seen a sharp increase in the number of referrals for our autism evaluation team this school year. As of February, we've had 177 initial referrals or transfers as compared to 109 for the whole school year last year. So, what does that mean for us? First, I'd like to show you a little clip from a television show called The Big Bang Theory, and it features Dr. Sheldon Cooper as a character who has Asperger's Syndrome. In the clip you're going to see, he checks out a children's book to help him learn how to make friends, and he creates a friendship algorithm. He's able to create the detailed flow chart with all the steps for making friends, but he's unable to effectively generalize his knowledge to a real-life situation. Click on it twice, they said. No. There we go. I'm sorry, there's going to be a little...
...plated the algorithm for making friends.
Sheldon, there is no algorithm for making friends.
Hear him out. If he's really on to something, we could open a booth at Comic-Con, make a fortune.
See, my initial approach to Kripke had the same deficiencies as those that plagued Stu the Cockatoo when he was new at the zoo.
Stu the Cockatoo?
Yes. He's new at the zoo.
It's a terrific book. I've distilled its essence into a simple flow chart that will guide me through the process.
Have you thought about putting him in a crate while you're out of the apartment?
Hello, Kripke. Sheldon Cooper here. It occurred to me that you hadn't returned any of my calls because I hadn't offered any concrete suggestions for pursuing our friendship. Perhaps the two of us might share a meal together. I see. Well, then perhaps you'd have time for a hot beverage. Popular choices include tea, coffee, cocoa. I see. No, 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 wait, don't hang up yet. What about a recreational activity? I bet we share some common interests. Tell me an interest of yours. Really? On actual horses? Tell me another interest of yours. Oh, I'm sorry. I have no desire to get in the water till I absolutely have to. Tell me another interest of yours.
Uh-oh, he's stuck in an infinite loop.
I can fix it.
It's interesting, but isn't ventriloquism by definition a solo activity? Tell me another interest of yours. I mean, tell me another interest of yours. Hmm. Is there any chance you like monkeys? What is wrong with you? Everybody likes monkeys. Hang on, Kripke. A loop counter and an escape to the least objectionable activity. Howard, that's brilliant. I'm surprised you saw that.
Gee, why can't Sheldon make friends?
All right, Kripke, that last interest strikes me as the least objectionable, and I would like to propose that we do that together tomorrow. Yes, I'll pay. All right, goodbye. All right. Time to learn rock climbing. Just in time. I believe I've isolated the algorithm for making friends.
Sheldon, there is no algorithm for making friends.
Hear him out. If he's really on to something, we could open a booth at Comic-Con, make a...
Andy to the rescue. Your timing is perfect to come back, Andy.
Which one do you want?
We're up to here. Okay. Sorry. Our students with autism are served throughout our whole continuum of services, from general education classrooms to self-contained special ed classrooms. We have many Sheldons, even some students who are twice exceptional. They're receiving services through special education and also are eligible to attend the LEAK program in our school district. We also have many students who unfortunately are severely impacted by their autism, and we want to help them all be successful in CFB. How do we support our teachers? Well, one way is we have an autism intervention team at Marie Huey made up of an autism specialist and trained autism assistants who go out to campuses and assist teachers who have students with autism in their classrooms. Each campus is served by a behavior resource specialist who's also trained to work with students with autism. And we offer professional development for both general education and special education teachers so they can learn the unique learning needs of our students with autism in our district. How do we support our families? Students with autism are eligible to have parenting and home training, so our staff goes into the home and helps parents learn how to work with their children, and if there's a behavior issue, how to help alleviate that behavior issue. We also have a parent group who helps support each other. It's called FUSE, Families United for Special Education, and this is for all parents of all students with disabilities. How does our community support us? Our community supports us through the participation in Casey's Run, an annual 5K and 1-mile family fun run held in memory of Casey Brekis, this year at Saturday, March 29, at Stan Ridge Stadium. The proceeds from Casey's Run benefit the All-Stars Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD All-Star Special Olympics Team. Community support enables us to have the CFB ISD 14th Annual Special Olympic Invitational Track Meet at Stan Ridge Stadium, which is Wednesday, March 26. We will be hosting nine neighboring school districts this year with more than 630 athletes participating, 240 athletes from CFB. Thank you for your attention. Do you have any questions?
Board members.
Randy, do you have any idea why we are identifying so many more children with autism?
In CFB?
Well, just generally, because the increase in numbers has gone up so rapidly.
Right. I think there is an increase, and I really don't, I think no one has the real answer. But yes, there are better techniques to identify students, evaluate them, and find that they have autism. And also, I believe that there's something environmental, but I don't have that answer. And nobody does. But there is, without a doubt, I mean, some of our students with autism, because of their behaviors related to autism, there would be no doubt if they were in any classroom that these are students that have autism.
1 in 88 is frightening.
Board members, other questions?
Mr. Goode?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wells, I know all of us on the board are very proud of what we do with those kids, but you touched a subject very near and dear to my heart. Ruth's and my son Hunter, 11th grader at RL Turner, has learning disability with dyslexia, short-term memory, and cognition problems. So we are in IEP and all that fun stuff every year. But it is a credit to our district, and this is one of the areas in our district that I think we truly strive in great ways. And I know, as a board member, I certainly share with my fellow board members that this is something that you're not just presenting to us, it truly is making a great difference. In Hunter's life, it has saved his life and his academic career. And on behalf of our family personally, please share our thanks for the great work that your staff does.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Wells, thank you for your report.
Thank you so much. Very kind.
Next, Agenda Item 3B, which is update on House Bill 5. Dr. Burns.
Mr. Goode, members of the board, if you recall, back in February, we had some inclement weather, and we were unable to present some reports. And so tonight, we're bringing you back that agenda item from February on House Bill 5. And I believe, Ms. Bailey, you're going to introduce a little bit more about House Bill 5 to us tonight.
Good evening. Joe Gillan, Executive Director of CTE Counseling and Nurses, will present a report on the most recent updates on House Bill 5 and how we will meet the needs of our students related to and aligned with those new graduation requirements. Ms. Gillan.
Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, members of the board, I'd like to provide you an update on House Bill 5. House Bill 5 provides more flexibility, a foundation plan with endorsements, and reduces the number of EOC exams in order for students to graduate. During the 83rd Texas Legislative Session, House Bill 5 was signed into law, which changed graduation requirements for high school students entering 9th grade beginning the 1415 school year. It establishes one graduation plan with the opportunity to earn endorsements and performance acknowledgements. Students will have greater flexibility in the types of courses they take to fulfill the requirements. While other districts may only offer courses in one area of study, CFB has remained on the forefront in that our district currently offers courses in all five endorsement areas and in each of the 16 career pathways. Thus, the new legislative changes complement our district's current goal to have students graduate to be workforce and college-ready. This is a snapshot of the foundation plus endorsement plan. Notice that students will be required to take four credits in English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. However, now students will have greater options to choose from to satisfy graduation requirements. For example, the requirements for English would be English 1, 2, and 3, but the fourth course would be an authorized advanced course such as English 4, or possibly creative writing, business English, and literary genres, just to name a few. And now the distinguished level of achievement. It is similar to our current distinguished plan. We will have a number of students that will meet the criteria. The only difference is that a student on this plan must take Algebra 2. For a student pursuing the distinguished level of achievement, the math sequence could look something like Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2 as a requirement, and the final advanced fourth course can be chosen from a list such as Digital Electronics, Robotics Programming and Design, and additionally, two new courses, Algebraic Reasoning and Statistics. Another tenet of House Bill 5 is to recognize students who have excelled in their academic achievement. There are several ways to do this. In our district, it is commonplace for students to take AP and IB exams, earn dual credit, and achieve recognition on college entrance exams. The state, however, is expanding the bilingualism and bilinguacy performance acknowledgements. The state has stipulated what this will look like, as noted on the slide in front of you. Additionally, the state is recognizing business and industry certifications. In CFB, a few examples of the many options would include our Cosmetology, AutoTech, and Microsoft Office programs. The end result is a licensure or certification upon graduation in these programs. Beginning in the 1415 school year, a school district must ensure that each student entering the 9th grade indicate an endorsement that the student intends to earn. The five endorsement areas are Arts and Humanities, Business and Industry, Multidisciplinary Studies, Public Services, and STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. Examples of topics of study offered within each endorsement area are listed on the slide. Please note that this is merely a sampling, as there are a myriad of courses available in CFB. The various endorsements are set up like colleges in a university. For example, the business and industry endorsement is similar to the College of Business, while the pathways are similar to college majors. In CFB, we offer 10 pathways within the business and industry endorsement, with each pathway having a number of courses that may be selected. The endorsement requires a sequence of four courses within the pathway. Most of the pathways end up in some type of practicum or internship opportunity. What to Expect. In the past, students have developed their graduation plans in group settings. However, now, 8th grade students will be meeting individually with counselors to choose their endorsement area and to develop their four-year plans. A common conception is that 8th graders don't really know what they want to be when they grow up. However, it is important to note that there is plenty of flexibility in the process, and once they have selected their endorsement, there will be ample time to change if necessary. The plans will be sent home for parental review and signature, and they will be returned to the counselor. If the parents have any questions or concerns, they may arrange a conference at that time. Plans will be entered into Bridges, which is our online planning tool. Once finalized, the plans will be locked in the system and sent to the high school. This is a snapshot of what students will see when they begin to populate courses into their personal graduation plan in Bridges. At the top, you will see a description of the chosen pathway and endorsement. Log into Bridges frequently. The good news is that students can log into Bridges from any location with internet access. Students can review their high school plans with parents, send messages to their counselor, search for colleges and universities, or even apply for financial aid, all through the web-based Bridges program. Ultimately, graduation is closer than most students realize. In order to graduate, they will now be required to earn a satisfactory score, Level 2, on five EOC exams as opposed to the 15 exams previously required. Upon leaving high school, students undoubtedly expect to be workforce and college-ready. With CFB's vision of high achievement for all students and the plethora of courses we offer in addition to the House Bill 5 requirements, CFB students will possess the 21st-century skills necessary to succeed in their post-secondary endeavors. As we continuously seek ways to improve upon and refine our process, a committee has been assembled to begin this summer to examine, tweak, and improve our current processes so that students are successful. Thank you.
There you go. Board members, comments, questions? Mr. Shore.
Ms. Gillan?
Yes, sir.
On the slide that started with what to expect, item number four was lock into Bridges.
Okay.
Probably everybody in this room besides myself and Mr. Goode are too young to remember that about six years ago, we had a student who was getting ready to graduate but didn't have a required course completed. And the Bridges addition that existed then didn't have the capability to flag if a student's courses that they had selected didn't allow that student to graduate. It merely showed the classes they were taking...
Right.
...but didn't flag there's a problem because with these courses, you won't have satisfied the requirements. And my recollection was that because of that situation, the folks who marketed Bridges said, "We're going to fix that situation."
Yes, sir.
Do we know if Bridges does that now?
Yes. There, when the stu...
Yes, it does?
Yes, it does. Yes. When the students are choosing their courses and it populates what they're going to be taking, there's a little column that has a check or an X to say that they're on schedule, that the proper courses have been selected for their plan. So, yes.
So somehow the screen shows if they haven't selected courses that allow them to graduate by having the required courses, something shows up?
Yes.
And does the counselor get to see that also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Ms. Gillan, I do have one question. Is it possible to identify how much effort that Carrollton Farmers Branch has expended on trying to put all of this together and make it available to the students? Because it's been a complete learning process for the staff and the teachers to understand what's being expected to them now. And that has got to have taken up a lot of effort on people's part to re-implement all of these changes and then to convey that information back to the students. Have you ever, has anyone ever considered how much effort has gone into this?
A great deal. Really, it has been the efforts of all of our counselors, middle school, high school, all of central office. The team has just been incredible in terms of working together. It's put a lot on our middle school counselors because they are required to meet with each student. So our high school counselors have stepped in, and they're helping with the process. And so I think there's some frustration because it's new. It's new for all of us, but it's a learning process, and I think we're moving in a positive direction. And I think the committee this summer is a good thing because we will be able to look at what we've done and what we need to improve on, because there's always room for improvement. Yes, ma'am?
So, can you go back to the slide that shows the distinguished? Previously, the distinguished had three years of foreign language?
I think it just, it's still, it's two. It's two now.
And then what age group do the new, well, does House Bill 5 apply to?
It is for incoming 9th graders in 1415. So we're currently working with our 8th graders right now across the district to get them prepared for all of the new requirements.
Mr. Shackman.
Are we getting any feedback from the parents, maybe students as well, that are currently in 8th grade and are having to go through this? Are the parents understanding it? Is there, what's happening on the home front?
We're conducting parent meetings, and we're getting a lot of good questions such as, "What is an endorsement?" And so we, you know, we want to be able to explain that to them so that they understand that it's helping to choose classes that will be in a sequence that makes sense. It will produce some sort of skill in a particular area. It will produce some sort of skill in a particular area as opposed to hodgepodge of elective classes that aren't necessarily preparing them for 21st century work skills. So, I think that when we meet with the parents, we try to explain the thinking behind the legislature as far as why we're having the endorsements and what the new graduation plan will ultimately do for their students, whether they are college-bound or work-bound right after high school.
Isn't the program that they use at Turner with the four areas, is that not similar to this endorsement?
It is, and I'm really proud to say that in our district, we already had something in place at Turner very similar to what the state, right, the outcome with House Bill 5. So, Turner has all four colleges, which are, you know, similar to what you see in a university, and then they have majors chosen. So, we, we're pretty much going to have that type of program all through the district.
Are we noticing any difference in the dropout levels with this kind of a program?
Well, I think it's a little too early, but I, but what we're seeing at Turner is it is helping students attach to a particular college or area that they're interested in. And so, we know that the research does tell us that if students feel attached to the courses, to the clubs, to the things that they're involved in, that that does help them to stay in school. So, it is all about the relationships and the attachment, and that's part of the thinking behind this.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
Other questions? Ms. Gillen, final question.
Yes, sir.
This is an ancillary question. Have any of the freshman students this year started talking about the new SAT and asking questions?
I might defer to Ms. Charleboy for that.
So, it's only been out two days, right? They just made the announcement two days ago, but there's going to be a lot of changes, such as, just going to do 1,600 points rather than 2,400. The essay will be optional.
Mm-hmm.
And they're providing, and they're partnering with Khan Academy to prepare all students, to provide all students preparation for free for the SAT.
What about our summer programs we have for those students?
We'll keep going with that.
Okay.
That's important.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gillen. Well done.
Court members, the next agenda item is Agenda Item 3C, Report on Accountability. Dr. Burns.
Mr. Goode, members of the board, as required by the new legislation, and in every year, obviously, we give you a report on accountability, there are, there have been some changes, as you noticed with House Bill 5, and so tonight, Ms. Parker's going to update you on accountability, and there are some requirements for a public hearing with that, which they'll explain. So, Ms. Bailey, anything to add to that?
Nothing. Patty Parker is our coordinator of state testing, and she will give us the updates.
Good evening. As Michelle Bailey shared with you, my name is Patty Parker. I am the coordinator of state testing, and I'm very pleased to share with you this evening the 2013 accountability system. As we see here in 2013 under the new system, our district earned the rating of Met Standard. Previously, in 2012, there was no, there were no accountability ratings provided across the state, and this was primarily due to the fact that the state had introduced a new assessment system for all grade tested, all grades testing between grades three and eight, as well as the introduction of end-of-course testing for our high school students. So, prior to this new system, we were used to an accountability system that provided four labels, exemplary, recognized, acceptable, and unacceptable. Well, those no longer exist under this new system. Currently, there are only two possible ratings, Met Standards and Needs Improvement. And the district and every single one of our campuses earn the ratings of a Met Standard for 2013. This new system divides the performance index into four different areas. The first one, Index 1, is called Student Achievement. Student Achievement is basically a snapshot of how many students passed at the Level 2 level on any of the state assessments. It is most similar to the previous system that we were most familiar with. New is the Student Progress Index. This is Index 2, and its focus is predominantly on student improvement. It looks at the growth of student learning from previous year to the current year. Index 3 is titled Closing the Performance Gap. This examines the gains that are made in traditionally disadvantaged groups in the nation, state, and in our district as well. The emphasis on, in this particular area, is for economically disadvantaged students, African-Americans, and our Hispanics in the area of student achievement. The last index, Index 4, Post-Secondary Readiness, applies to only high schools this, this year. It highlights the importance of earning a high school diploma, and it consists predominantly of the graduation rate and the percentage of recommended and distinguished diploma plans. Next, another new feature of the accountability system is that it's reported in this graph form and is provided for every single campus and across the district. As we can see, looking across here, Index 1 is calculated at the all-student level, and in every single area for all four indices, Carrollton Farmers Branch surpassed the state and/or the region. The very first index, Student Achievement, the state provided a target score of a 50. In this, across the state, our different districts in, across the state earned a score of a 77, but in Carrollton Farmers Branch, our district's score was an 80 for Index 1. Index 2, focusing on student growth from one assessment year to the next, this includes all ethnic groups. As you can see, the target was set by the state at 21, and our district scored a 35. Index 3 addresses economically disadvantaged students in the two lowest-performing groups from the prior year. Here, the target was 55. The district was a 77, and this one area, we clearly surpassed the other districts in the region as well as the state. Index 4, Post-Secondary Readiness, looks specifically once again at the graduation rates. The target score was a 75, and our district scored an 86. So, as I shared before, we exceeded the state and the region in all four indices and outpaced others in Index 3. Next, in the accountability system, is something known as System Safeguards. Now, System Safeguards have no impact on our rating. They're mentally reported out, and they're only used to identify areas of improvement. Now, like many students across the state of Texas that found the writing to be particularly challenging on this new assessment with the end-of-course, along with the state and region, that was one area that was identified for our district, and specifically with two particular groups. Our students that are identified as English language, English language learners, as well as students with special needs. Distinction Designations. Well, first, let me share with you that this cannot be awarded to the district as a whole, but these distinctions are awarded to any campus that meets the accountability rating of a Met Standard. They recognize outstanding achievement, and they look at indicators of readiness. And looking at towards our district, we earned a total of 40 distinctions in 2013. TEA also recognizes schools that achieve all three of the distinctions, and in our district, 21% of campuses across the Texas were awarded this distinction, but in our district, we had all high schools and an additional five campuses that earned the highest of honors. And when we look at distinctions, there's three different ways you can earn it. The first one is in academic achievement in reading and English language arts. There were 13 distinctions in that area. Another way is academic achievement in math. There were 13 awarded in that. And in student progress, we had 14. Next up, we got some new letters to learn. AEIS no longer exists. We now have the TAPER report called the Texas Academic Performance Report, and these continue to contain the performance and profile sections for our district and our campus. It also provides campus performance objectives and some additional reports. Similar to AEIS in the past, a copy of the TAPER report has been published to meet the notification requirements, and it is currently accessible on our district's website. Last but not least, looking ahead to this year, we hope to have some more information about the 2014 accountability system, hopefully by the end of March. We are still waiting for the commissioner's decision on the new report card rating system and how that will play out for districts. We know that letters grades are coming, but at this point in time, we anticipate them not existing in the accountability system until probably 2016. And that concludes my portion of this report for tonight.
Court members, questions? Mr. Shore.
I can't help myself.
Very good.
I want to focus on the closing the performance gap.
Quote, Index 3? Yes, sir.
Because I'm troubled because it seems to me that there's a way to play that index where you can look better than you should. And let me now put some evidence to support that. Why don't you think of two golfers?
Okay.
One shoots 90, and one shoots 76. The 90 golfer improves to shoot 85. A definite improvement in golf. The 76 improves to shoot 69. A definite improvement in golf. In fact, the gap has increased between those two golfers, and yet they have both improved And so, I'm wondering, in closing the performance gap, we want to tell the guy who's about to shoot 69, triple bogey the last hole so that we narrow the gap instead of having the improvement that has occurred with both those golfers. And so, how is that index utilized?
Well, Index 3, it's a good analogy to take a look. Everybody would love to save a stroke or two off their game and better around a bogey golf.
But you may have hurt yourself because the better golfer has improved more.
Well, in Index 3, what we're looking at specifically is the change in a student's performance based on those three particular areas on if they met the Level 2 standard. And once again, this is the current system that gave us the rating for 2013. We know that they're going to be tweaking the accountability ratings for 2014. So, the system that I just shared with you is a report from the previous year. Next, it's looking at what the student, how many students in each of those areas scored, and looks at where they were, not those particular students, but where students and how our groups were in 2012. It identifies the two lowest areas, and that can change. Changes at some of the district, not only could change at the district level, but some changed at the campus level as well.
Okay.
And then they take a look at where those students' scores are the second year. One thing to take a look at to an advantage is that we are in the same phase in for the standards for one more year. So, we're going to be able to look at apples to apples, or in your analogy, we're still playing the same round of golf at the same golf course.
I don't know if you answered my question, okay? So, we're measuring students to see where they are?
Yes. Based on whether or not they pass student achievement, they're past the test.
And we're measuring the traditional groups, the disadvantaged groups?
Economically disadvantaged is a non-negotiable across the state.
Okay, okay. And so, there's a gap that regretfully exists between these different groups?
Yes, sir.
And we want the students whose scores aren't as high in academics or low in golf to be the same height or depth in golf, depth in golf, height in academics?
Correct.
Who, who, who are we measuring against? Maybe that's my first-
Oh, that's a great question. They're looking at, first of all, identifying the students in each of those groups and just measuring those students' performance from one year to the next year.
So, third graders, how did they do in third grade?
Third grade, then the next year, how they do in fourth grade.
And so, if that group has gone up in fourth grade?
Yes, sir.
That's a good thing.
That is.
But if that group was below a different group in third grade and is still below that same group in fourth grade, but now-
Has made slight strides.
-farther below because that other group did even better.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, has the district penalized in that closing the achievement gap index?
Not necessarily. I would say that that wouldn't occur because in Index 3, they're identifying the areas that have been traditionally underserved or underrepresented. So, basically, the scores that the students are reported in Index 1, which is student achievement, are then just looked again in Index 3. And if additional gains are made, then a couple extra points are made into that system. It's not a straight percentage number. It's a very interesting formula that they're using to take a look at that. One thing I want to share with you is about that Index 2, they're not penalized because in Index 2, Index 2 has nothing to do with whether or not the students passed. It's if their scores increase from one year to the next.
I got that. That may be the only I got.
That's a game changer when it comes to this new pro, new system.
But I'm not understanding, and I don't want to belabor-
No, that's fine.
I'm not understanding if, if Index 3, closing the achievement gap, if the district is rewarded for closing the achievement gap.
Recognized score.
I'll save it for later on.
Okay.
But I do have another question, Dr. Burns.
Okay.
I hope I do a better job.
No, I'm not prepared. I have to do a better job of learning. I need to go to school here. My question, Dr. Burns, is we have had evidence of, that we're supersede, we're exceeding the state, we're exceeding the target. Well, I think that everybody who sits in this horseshoe wants to make certain that we're comparing ourselves with worthy adversaries.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, my question is, are we comparing ourselves to who we should be comparing ourselves to? Because if I wanted to have a basketball team this year and I compared myself to TCU, I may be terrific, but if I compared myself to Kansas, maybe not so good.
Absolutely. Mr. Shore, you bring out an important aspect of why we use ERG in that scorecard because it levels the field. This system is trying to do that a little bit with the game, but it doesn't have a regression model for economically disadvantaged. So, we'll have to crunch the numbers under ERG and find that level playing field and then compare it to those that are competing the best under the same circumstances, if you will.
For what it's worth, I'm not disappointed to see we're doing better than the state, to see that we're doing better than the target. I'm not disappointed, but I'm not necessarily impressed by that.
Yeah, and we really don't know yet. I mean, because it doesn't have that in there, and there are groups in there that's going to be a little bit of an interesting dynamic to do this system because you're going to be grouped. And so, that's not as a sophisticated way to regress to a mean, but it is going to be something that we'll kind of try to decipher the data and what it tells us. And we'll continue to measure ourselves against, again, what we say we think are the best districts in terms of ERG, yeah.
Ms. Slott.
Can you go back to the slide with the one that Mr. Shore's been talking about a lot?
Sure.
With the state and the target?
This one.
So, I understand the state is the, like, average state scorer? Is that what that is?
Actually, it's the, across the, across the state, the target was a 50 was what they set out for, meeting the goal for student achievement in Index 1. The state, if you took a look at all the campuses across the state of Texas, their average score was a 77, and our district was an 80. The region was a 79. The region was a 79.
So everybody's target was a 50?
The target for the first year was to get at least 50% of the kids to pass. The first target was, can we get 50% of the kids to pass in the state of Texas on this new system? The state's average was a 77%, the region was a 79, and in Carrollton Farmers Branch, when we look at all students and all subjects, it was 80%.
And you may have already said this, but is there a new target for next year?
We don't know that new target at this point in time, and if they'll change it.
Is it TEA that sets the target?
Part of it is TEA, part of it's with the Commissioner, as well as there is an ATAC Committee, an Advisory Committee, that comes across the state of Texas. And they've put their committee recommendations there, and they're currently looking at it.
Ms. Klein.
I'm good.
Mr. Shackman.
I was going to ask a question about this too, because the, do we have any idea that the state targets are going to remain the same? It seems like one of the troubles that we have consistently in our accountability systems is the score you had to have one year in the tax test, and the next year, they always change.
It kept changing, exactly.
You never can compare apples to apples. So what's the likelihood that that will change? And then I'm also concerned, one of the index two indicators is increased one year this year, tracking a third-grade class when they go into fourth grade.
Yes, we'll talk about that, that's a very interesting.
But the fourth-grade test they take this year is not the fourth-grade, you know, those tests all change.
Correct. They do. So let's answer the first question. Do we know if these targets are going to remain exactly the same? The only thing we've heard at this point in time is that the scale score distributions that they're going to use are going to stay the same, because we're in the same phase-in year. We're very interested to see how that looks. Whether or not the targets exactly stay the same, we're not too sure, but we do know that we're held to the exact same standards as the previous year. So the number of questions needed to be answered on every test at every grade level has not changed. So that percentile will stay the same. So we should hope to know something more by the end of this month on your first question. Your second question brings up something very interesting about index two. Index two is a very complicated formula, and what's really interesting about index two is, students can count in index two even if they didn't pass the test, because the purpose of index two is to show students increase, that they are moving towards satisfactory or moving towards the advanced. The first thing, there's four criteria in 2013 that had to be met. First of all, there had to be a score for both years in the state of Texas. So the student had to have two test scores. The second indicator, the second criteria, was it had to be in two consecutive years, so from third grade to fourth grade. We do have some students that are taking above-grade level tests, they were included in that if they took fifth-grade tests. Let's say they're third grader, taking a fifth-grade test, and then the next year they took a sixth-grade test, well, two consecutive years. Next, it had to be subsequent. So basically, this was in math and reading, because there was no way in 2013 to compare a fourth-grade writing score to a seventh-grade writing score. So writing was not included in this one, and neither was science, for all practical purposes. Then the last criteria, students had to take the test in the same version and the same language. So if the student took a test in Spanish in third grade, they would be included in this category only if in the fourth grade, they took the test in Spanish as well. Every single student included in that, they're looking at each student where they were one year, and comparing them to their score the previous year, to see if their scores had met any gains. Each subject, each grade level, and each initial score had a different targeted number for them to show gains, because as you shared, the tests are different. There are more questions each year, some tests are a little bit more rigorous than others. And even looking at the EOC test for the 10th graders in English II, that one, that was almost a flat line. I mean, as long as you did just as well as you did last year, you're doing pretty good in the state of Texas, because that became a very challenging and rigorous test.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Good, if I can add, Ms. Klein and Mr. Shackman bring out a great point, and we'll kind of provide some emphasis with that, is that the tests got harder.
It did.
I mean, the test is significantly harder for kids to pass, so it makes some sense that the score was lower, and it is a moving target. But I think it's important to notice that our kids are learning more, they're being required to demonstrate that learning, and it should be that way. But when the state changes a test this significantly, it takes a while to kind of see where everything kind of levels out. But we still are very proud of our kids for what they're doing in a much more rigorous test, and still competing at, you know, obviously with the rest of the kids in the state. So we're very proud of their work, and obviously our teachers' work to get them prepared for that, so.
Yes, sir.
Board members, other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Shore, I do have one request, that maybe you and Ms. Parker can get together?
Yes.
Get a clarification to your.
Golf and academic.
And she plays golf really well, so you probably don't want to play with her.
So. You say I'm not too shabby.
Well, look at you out there the whole course.
Get a clarification, Mr. Shore, and then at a subsequent board meeting, you could give us a short summary.
Deal.
Look forward to it, I do. Thank you very much.
Ms. Parker, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Good.
And Mr. Good, you got a second part to that coming up here, by law, with the public hearing, so.
Agenda item 3D, which is a public hearing on accountability. Therefore, at this time, this meeting is recessed and open, and reopens in a public hearing portion of our agenda. Now, the board will entertain questions and comments regarding the accountability report from the floor. If any of you would like to speak on behalf of this accountability report, please proceed to the podium. Announce your name and address on the microphone, so that we can hear you, and we may all fully hear your statement and questions. Are there any individuals who would like to address the board? Seeing none, if I can. Oh, yes, sir.
Does this include the HP House Bill 5, or is that a previous topic?
It's a previous topic.
It's a previous topic. They're related under House Bill 5, but the accountability one is on the accountability report.
Can I speak to House Bill 5?
During the audience.
We'll have audience for guests shortly. Just on accountability, seeing none who wants to speak on this, we will close this public hearing of our meeting and reconvene the public meeting. Before we move on further, let me just clarify quickly. Coming up shortly is audience for guests. If anyone would like to speak to the board, please fill out the form that's outside the double doors, and give that form to Ms. Scrivener. We will now move on to Agenda Item 3E, which is Report on Construction. Dr. Burns.
Mr. Good, one more report, members of the board, one more report tonight, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Hyatt to introduce our construction report. Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Since we've had a number of reports tonight, we will rapidly move through this, but we've got a couple of significant construction projects going on, and we just thought it'd be appropriate to bring the board up to speed on where we are on those projects, so that when you're out in the public and someone asks you, you'll be able to respond. So tonight, we have Mr. Terry Hoyle and Mr. Mike Elmore from SHW Architects, and they will bring us up to speed. I'd just like to take the opportunity while we're saying this, sometimes we overlook Mr. Tom Bell from our staff. Tom is our construction manager in the district. You don't see him real often, because most of the buildings he's in don't have kids in them, because they're under construction. But I got to tell you, this district is well-served and gets a great benefit from Mr. Bell's services, and he deserves a lot of credit for this. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Mr. Elmore.
Thank you, Mark. We'd like to present four projects to you tonight. Two of them are currently under construction, and two that are in the design phases. I'll go over the first two very quickly here. First one is Los Colinas. This is an aerial view, looking down, if you were up in a helicopter, looking down on top of the current Los Colinas Elementary School. And you, we're showing a yellow outline around that, and this is the new, what's shown in white will be, is the new school that's under construction right now. You can see the yellow line where the existing school is. So the parking lot that's within the yellow, it'll be done after the school is torn down. So there's a lot of work to be done this summer. The, there, here's the floor plan of the school. You can see the areas in blue are the classrooms, the area in green is the dining room and kitchen. The larger oblong box at the bottom is the gymnasium. The administration is directly right above it. The point, right here is the main entrance to the building, so the front drive is coming in this way, and the entrance will be right here onto the building. The current building is sitting right there, and right there. It's about 12 feet away from the existing school, so it's been real close construction activity going on, but it's going very well. Okay, what's, there, there we go. This is the upper level. It is a two-story school, so the upper grade levels will be located in the upper portion of the building. Here's an aerial view that you can really see the, this area here, this is the new school, and this dark line right there is the boundary of the existing school right there. So you can see how close the proximity to the existing school is. As I said earlier, obviously, students are still in that school. Soon as school's out, they'll move into the new school and then do the activities that need to take place at that school. This is an artist's rendering of the entrance to the new school. The existing school would be right out here in the parking lot, and so we're looking directly into the main entrance into the building. A couple shots of the actual construction that's going on. This is a view of the interior of the dining room, and looking at the stage. This particular picture was taken about a month ago. We were going to present last month, but there's a lot more of the construction that's done. Ceiling's in, the jib board's all painted, and the floor's getting ready to go in this particular area. This is a typical classroom. The classrooms are finished out, and they're ready to be punched. We'll probably start punching those within the next week or two. You can see out the window the closeness of the existing school there. Next project that is currently under construction is Polk Middle School. And here again is an aerial view of the Polk, showing its current state. The yellow boxes are indicating the new addition that we're adding on to. The blue indicates the fire lane that we have to relocate to keep that continuous around the building. The small yellow box at the front is the cafeteria addition that will help with the overcrowding that's going on there. This is the lower-level floor plan where we have the, on the new addition, there's classrooms and a large, the larger blue box is a multipurpose room for large group gathering. And then after school lets out, the area there at the north end of the building will go in there and turn that area that's currently some lab space, will turn that into three classrooms and some office space. This is the upper level, showing the music room that'll be installed here on the upper level in the classrooms, and then also the expansion of the current cafeteria over there for much-needed room. This is an artist's rendering of the two-story addition at the back of the school. If you were to follow the building around, you'd see that. That's what it looked like about a month ago. If you've driven by there and have looked at it, you'll know that it's almost totally enclosed now with sheathing, and it's really taking shape. In fact, this area has a roof on it right now, and the front cafeteria, they'll be putting a roof on that during spring break next week. This is the cafeteria addition, and like I said, that was about a month ago. Right now, the structural steel's all standing up, and the steel decking for the roof is in place, but they have not installed the roof yet on that particular project, part of the project. I'll turn it over to Terry.
Thanks, Mike. So Freeman will be the next project that ends up going into construction here in the near future, and I'll talk about that in a moment. The existing site plan that you're looking at, with the front door being on the right, so we're looking at doing an expansion on what else calls the backside of the building, which is a nine-classroom addition, basically like homerooms or a typical classroom addition. And just like with Polk, there's a relocation of some of the fire lane to keep that contiguous after construction. Taking a closer look, it is just a very simple addition, extending three of the classroom wings with those nine classrooms, and then the toilets and other support facilities that are needed to go along with that. So, again, a very simple addition. The idea is that it's just a, the aesthetic matches the current building that's there, so it'll blend in real nicely. Next is Ranchview High School. Oh, and let me say on the other one, on the Freeman project, it'll be bidding next week. Should be brought to you as a guaranteed maximum price to you in the very near future, with construction completing prior to Christmas of 2014. For Ranchview High School, oh, excuse me, there will be four building additions to the building, basically to bring it at or near capacity. Also, some site improvements. That includes some field improvements, along with parking, that you can see highlighted, and then a potential for some additional tennis courts. As we take a closer look, looking at an overall plan, we'll start with the fine arts addition is what you see in that purple color that's extending that fine arts wing. On the right, on the left-hand side, expansion to the athletic area, that's a piece to the building, and then a multipurpose building that sits out separate. And then just behind the existing stage in the dining room is a two-story classroom addition. Taking a look at each one of those a little closer. Two-story classroom addition will have 20 classrooms, six of those will be science labs, and then three will be large group instruction classrooms. The multipurpose building you see on the left, it'll be very similar to what you have at Creekview High School. And then there's an addition of a new weight gym added here, as well as a varsity locker room, and then supports facilities, including new laundry to serve that, all those programs. And then the biggest addition will be the addition of the auditorium for 600 seats, and it has all of the other support services that it needs behind and around it. And then one of the additional things we're adding is adding a new band hall, giving orchestra the opportunity to have its own space, and then the addition of an art room in the lower corner here. And the idea is that with the new restroom facilities and all, that this is a new kind of front door for the auditorium. It also has immediate access over to the Black Box Theater, so if you have those kind of programs for the public as well. And then we're connecting to the existing building, not only through, I'll say, as I'll call it, it's back a house, through the existing corridors, but then a new construction along the front of the building that ties it back to the rest of the main building, so they're always inside, not going outside, nor having to go back through those other programs. And then just finally, just a quick sketch, just this conceptual idea, just kind of giving a massing of what that area might look like from the outside. So with that, we'll open for questions. If you have any.
Very good. Board members, questions? Ms. Klein.
Is Los Colinas larger than it currently, is the new building going to be larger? Kind of the footprint looks larger.
Yes, Mike, you want to speak to the square footage? The program for the new school is 90,000 square feet, and I can't remember the current building's square footage, but it is, it is a little larger.
Ms. Klein, the reason the footprint looks a little smaller is because there's a significant two-story element to it. So you're doubling that deck, so you, the square footage of the building is, I think, about 20% larger than the old building. And as you see, we've added the addition to Freeman, and intentionally making this building larger, and will more than likely bring back to you an addition at La Belita Elementary School. This part of our town is the one.
This part of our town is one of the only areas of town where we're having student growth and we're addressing that by increasing the size of these campuses.
What's the capacity of Los Colinas? Student capacity?
Seven forty, I think so. Seven forty, I think, is where we're at.
Yeah, approximately 750, I think, is what the new building is.
Other questions?
I'm just curious. What has the staff done about parking during the Los Colinas construction?
Actually, Tom worked really well with the staff and they worked out, there at the front, if you remember the front, there was a large span that it only had one-way parking. They actually put parking so that it had a drive in the center with parking on both sides, so they gained parking there. But everything's really worked out quite well during construction. You know, you have a lot of construction workers and they need a place to work, so we didn't take up any of the spaces for the school. A lot of them are parking either onsite or parking to the, what is that, the?
East.
East, in the church parking lot there, so it worked out quite well.
Thank you.
Other questions? If I may, Ranchview, what, based upon the current addition of the southeast classrooms, what is the optimum student population now with that addition?
With that, I would give a guess for probably 500.
500 more?
Yeah. With an average of 25, depending on what programs that they use. With an average of 25 per class, you'll have 500.
Okay. Mr. Goode? Mr. Hyatt, that makes a total of?
Well, we're actually doing a couple of things to give some flexibility to it. Mr. Hoyle mentioned the three large group instruction. Those are actually designed as double rooms. It'll serve really well for a large group, but if the enrollment requires it, we could redesign those with simple wall additions to pick up three more rooms. And if we, if we go to the maximum and add that to it, we can probably get to a total of about 1,600 in that school.
And we still have the opportunity, if necessary, to extend that again, that southeast classroom?
Sure. We could do another addition. With the growth that we've seen there, I mean, frankly, we see a little growth in our lower grades that we expect to migrate up, but we expect this addition to handle the population out there for quite a while.
Okay, very good. Board members, final opportunity, questions? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your attention.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to remind you one more time that the next agenda item is going to be audience for guests, so if you would like to speak to the board, please fill out the form outside the double doors and give that to Ms. Scrivner. At this time, we'll go to agenda item 4B, 4A, Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is a mechanism that the board uses to receive feedback and input from our constituents. Your comments should pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Our trusty timekeeper, Mr. Shore, will provide you a signal notifying you that your three minutes has expired. Hopefully, he'll let you know before. Remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board may defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting if you so desire. But I believe that is not the case here. Ms. Scrivner, I have one audience for guests. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. At this time, we'll then move to agenda item 4A and the first person is Mr. Mike DeVallit. Please state your name, address.
Mike DeVallit, 3161 White Marsh Circle in Farmer's Branch. Dr. Burns, board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I have a serious concern about HB5 that I wanted to share, just so you know kind of what's being said about it. HB5, from what I understand, is Common Core-aligned. And specifically, what I found was the STEM endorsement is Common Core-aligned. I want to talk about that a little bit. And I'm just going to read some excerpts that I got from the Texas Eagle Forum. And it talks about why moms are protesting Common Core. This is one of the major reasons why moms are vigorously opposing schools adopting the much-bellied Common Core standards is that they're tied to the gathering and storing of in-depth personal data about every child. The files, the files are called longitudinal, which means they include information from birth and track the kids all through school and college. The longitudinal system reminds us of the omniscient practice of the Chinese communists who in pre-internet days stored every child's personal information, academic, medical, behavioral, and home situation, in a manila folder that was ultimately turned over to employers upon finishing school. The collection and retention of voluminous personal information, academic, from pre-K through university, behavioral, political, and appraisals by others, is the way a totalitarian state keeps control of its people. Common Core replaces traditional local control of education with a privately copyrighted document that must be used as written and not altered in any way. Schools and teachers are complaining about the high cost of teacher training, plus buying all-new materials, books, workbooks, iPads, and computers for every student. Common Core has created a tremendous money-making opportunity for private companies that advertise their products as aligned with Common Core, and "aligned" has become the magic word to promote sales. California has allocated $1.25 billion in the current school year for adopting Common Core. And in closing, if you're as mystified about this as I am, and so are the teachers, be assured, David Coleman, the person credited with developing the Common Core standards, is the new head of the college board and says he is now rewriting the SAT tests. The tests are the mechanism of national control over curriculum. Thank you.
Very good. Board members, we'll move on to agenda item 4B, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items. And the board has been provided ample information about these in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items on the consent agenda you would like to pull at Hearing none, seeing none. Board members, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Shore? Move that we approve the consent agenda? And?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Matthews. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to agenda item 5, Comments from Board Members. Board members, are there any items that you would like to have, would like to discuss? Any comments?
I just have, I just have one thing I want to share and it deals with your sharing with the community that every board member is exceeding the number of required hours that each board member's required to obtain. The last meeting of the North Texas Association of School Boards, we were fortunate enough to have one of our trustees be selected as the recipient of a scholarship to either the Summer Leadership Institute or the meeting in September. And the reason that we were able to have one of our trustees selected was because that trustee is in attendance at many, many meetings.
Perfect attendance.
Perfect attendance. And so, that saves the district up to $750 and so I applaud the six of you for giving us that opportunity.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I just have to say this and I'm piggybacking on what Mr. Shackman said a while ago, and I should have said it, Randy, when you finished a while ago, but I was an administrator for 16 years in this school district and part of my job description was evaluating teachers every year. And I always look forward most to evaluating our special ed teachers that were given to me. And personally speaking, I got the most reward out of watching those kids in those classrooms, more so than anything else. I'd, I mean, I would much rather be in a severely handicapped special ed room evaluating that teacher and the interaction with those kiddos than AP Calculus class, for example. I got more personal reward, in fact, and I can't go into this, but one particular event took place while I was evaluating a teacher at RL Turner High School that will stay with me the rest of my life. And it was the most touching experience educationally for me in my 37 years in this district. I applaud you and everybody that works with you.
Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item 6, which is Closed Meeting. Dr. Burns, is there anything for closed meeting?
No, sir, there are not.
Well, I'm not going to waste everyone's time by reading all this information. Therefore, by my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at 9:08 PM. Thank you all for being here.